Yeah, we're at page thirteen of the packet. I'll highlight a couple of the main items here and then stand for any questions with the, maybe your point here, financial update. Basically, the revenues in the general fund are at about forty-six percent of our budget amounts for 2020. Our two main amounts, if you, I guess, jump ahead to page fourteen, our property taxes, that was one I was curious to see if the collection percentage would change much for this year, and it really, we came in with strong collections there. The other item, also, I guess, that was the top item on page fourteen, and then the few line items down, the building permits, you can see, we're basically at about fifty percent there for the midway point. So, good to see that the housing market seems to be fairly strong here still. So, as far as revenues, I think we're doing well there. Expenditures is also forty-six percent, you know, in comparison to the total 2020 general fund budget expenditure fund. That report starts on page sixteen of the packet. Everything mainly seems to be in that forty to fifty percent range as far as where we're at, other than if it's an item like the fire department where we've paid through three quarters to City of St. Bonnie and City of Mound, items like that, we've paid for our annual audit. So, I think most things are tracking fine there as far as the budgeted general fund expenditures or actual to budget comparison. One thing I did want to point out on both the revenue report and the expenditure report, and a line item or a column was added on the far right for basically a 2019 year-to-date amount, to be able to see, I guess, on a specific line item from nineteen to twenty, where we were halfway through 2019 versus halfway through twenty. So, hopefully, I think that came up during the first quarter report, so that's been, and so, hopefully, that was helpful. Otherwise, I guess, as far as our cash and investment report, you can see the, that was on, I think, page twenty-three, twenty-four there, we've got the couples with negative fund balances where it's just the timing difference on when we get our property taxes and special assessments in, but no, no real worries there. So, I think I'll open it up for any questions from the council, if there is any, and go from there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grimm. Council, any questions?
Brian, thank you. This is Shannon. Thank you for putting that column. I think that was very helpful, just to see where we are compared to last year. That was, that was nice to have that comparison. I had a quick question. Can you, can you refresh my memory about on page twenty-three, the cable fund? Where do, where do those revenues come from? And are they a continuing source of revenue, or is that just a balance that's sitting there?
Um, that would be, I think, Mike Broni may have even a better understanding, but we get quarterly revenue, and I think it's the franchise fees from MediaCom, that's usually in that, I think it's like twelve, thirteen thousand, eleven to thirteen thousand dollars a quarter. It comes out to about fifty thousand dollars annually, I think that's what we get from them for our franchise fees for the cable fund that gets deposited there.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe we discussed that last year, and we have to use it for certain enterprises or certain things, such as communications and things like that. So, I believe we were taking part of the administrative, like Ally's position, and using some funds to pay her salary for that. Is that my, that was my recollection. There were some other things we were using. We're getting a lot of feedback. I'm not sure who's, whose microphone is that, but Brian, can you weigh in a little on that?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, that is correct. I think we initially had started charging some, or basically when the fee for televising our meetings and stuff to our Mr. Leaf, I think we charged that. And then we, we did also in the last year or two change, I think maybe it was just with this last budget where some of, you know, the Director of Administration's time, or Ally's time now, as well as some of Anisha, as she helps with communications, our administrative assistant, time gets charged to the cable fund. That is correct, a percentage.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, any other questions? No, Pam, I just wanted to say adding that column did help me as well. I appreciate that.
Oh, you're welcome. Yeah, for, that was good feedback from the council. I think it even helped myself looking at it, so thank you.
Yeah, thanks. And I was pleased to see that our property revenues were as high as they were. I wasn't sure what to expect with the, with the pandemic and where people would be at, but that's good news. And also, the building permit fees and the building permits that are coming in, that's also good news for our city. So, all right. Otherwise, we'll move on. Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, we'll move on to our coronavirus relief fund. Mr., who is taking that? Mr. Broni, Mr. Beatty?
Um, I think I'm gonna start, and I'll ask either Brian or Ron if he feels like jumping in to go right to do so. So, in your packet, Mayor and Council, is just a brief summary of how we arrived to where we are today from our last council meeting. A lot has happened here in those five weeks. So, shortly after our council meeting, the governor announced that they were releasing eight hundred and forty-seven million dollars to Minnesota cities, and you essentially had like a day or two to, to sign up and certify your city by completing a form. So, Brian and I worked on that, and we submitted it and got approved, and we actually received the funding. From what we can understand, and from what my colleagues have been telling me, if you look at, I'll look at the page number of the packet here, if you look at page twenty-six, that's the start of the FAQs that come from the Department, the Treasury Department, US Treasury Department. What most cities are going to be using these funds for is to, what's under the bold paragraph that starts the guide and says blah, blah, blah. So, underneath that paragraph, it talks about paying for public safety employees for services substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. So, what most cities are doing is they are utilizing the funds obtained through this CARES program and applying it to paying for our police department costs for both pay and benefits, since they're the ones that are kind of the frontline workers for, for the city, so to speak. That is going to probably use up, will use up, if that's a loud expense, and I'm hedging just a little bit, I'll tell you about that in a second, but if that's allowed, that will use up all five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars that the city's been allocated from the federal government. Basically, our payroll for the police department in its entirety for a pay period, which is a two-week pay period, is roughly in the low sixties, if I remember my conversation today with Mr. Grimm. So, it's about a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a month, and this is eligibility began March one, and so, March, April, May, June, July into August, that'll eat up all five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. We won't even get to November fifteenth, which is the end date. Again, why I was hedging, Brian and I participated in a call from, or in a conference, teleconference on July first, that was part one of a two-part explanation, so to speak, for cities to hear an expert talk about what this money can be used for and can't be used for. And the presenters were good, but they were hedging like I'm hedging. There's actually a follow-up meeting scheduled for next week that both Brian and I will be participating in as well. I think we'll have a little better clarity next week, but again, what I'm hearing is that we can use this for public safety mostly. And so, that's what we're at this point in time planning on doing. But I think when we get to the next council meeting, hopefully, after attending part two of these, of this CARES funding meeting, we should have a little bit more clarity about what you can do, what you can't do with the money. But at this point in time, that's what we think. I don't know, Brian, if you want to add anything, or Ron, or Paul, any of you guys?
Yeah, I can, I can add a little bit. I think what Mike's saying encapsulizes it in the, the biggest item, I think, is that the presenter kept talking about if the service provided by the public safety was had, had at least, you know, changed or been different because of COVID-19. And I guess from my perspective, I think everyone's had to change, you know, a little bit to dedicate to, you know, how they provide that service, you know, because of the pandemic. So, in my perspective, you know, I would think that the eligible expenses to use the payroll cost of public safety and have this, you know, this money that came in basically reimburse that, but the, yeah, the presenter that day, as Mike stated, talked about different tasks and different, you know, that they're gonna, there's gonna be monthly and quarterly reporting the city has to do to, and we haven't seen what that all entails. So, that's, I think, the biggest unknown as far as if, if we're gonna be able to hopefully, you know, use those dollars to public safety. I guess, yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to add.
Okay. Chief Falls, anything?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, this is a topic that there's been a lot of talk throughout the area chiefs about what exactly would be allowed here. And there is, I don't have the document in front of me at this time, but there is a provision in there that basically states that public safety personnel, they've already presumed that to be COVID-related. And so, they did that to, to basically create some administrative efficiencies so that we're all on the same page. So, I certainly interpret that to mean that this money would be eligible to be used for the purpose that Mr. Broni discussed earlier. So, obviously, we're gonna continue to get that verified, and at this point, it looks like we will be good to go under that premise. So, that's all I have at this time.
Great, thanks. Yeah, and we'll find out, we'll hear more next, next council meeting too, once you've gone to that second, or participated in that second conference call.
Did Ron Beatty want to say something? Ronnie, he's still on?
Uh-oh, did we lose Ron? Oh, no.
That's not good.
No, we may have lost Ron, okay. Well, we'll get, we'll get back to that. In the meantime, does council have any questions?
Yes, this is John. I, Mr. Grimm, how do you anticipate tracking the expenditures and/or their reimbursement? And I guess what I'm getting at is, obviously, if we can apply the money against the public safety salaries, we still need to see the salaries in total in that. This is a one, we hope, probably a one-time venture doing it this way. But for, obviously, for budgeting for next year, salaries are still what they were, and just because we got reimbursement this year, doesn't change the fact that the salaries are still part of the general fund. So, how do you envision, say, for instance, on third quarter, when they get to third quarter paperwork, how would you show, would you add lines to the public safety section, or how do you envision doing that?
Um, yeah, that's a good question, Councilmember Schumpel. As for right now, we actually have, as Mr. Broni said, we received that money, I think it was right after the Fourth of July, like that first full week of July. So, for right now, what if we, if I was presenting the third quarter report, it's basically federal aid, so right now, I put it to a revenue code in the general fund that's basically, you know, federal aid, you know, that's there to help with these expenditures that cities have incurred in their 2020, you know, calendar year now. So, that's right now, and that's sort of additional information that'll be nice, or hopefully, there'll be some further guidance at that next webinar next week as far as, I mean, it's money that the cities receive in revenues, you know, supplied to net out against some of those expenditures, so, but it's, you know, like you stated, it's one-time, you know, revenue. It's not something that's gonna, you know, be ongoing or keep, or keep coming in in subsequent years. So, that's why I quoted it right now, is one-time federal aid in the general fund.
Okay, thank you. This is Ron Beatty, can you hear me?
Now, we can, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, are we, are we on the same subject? I, I couldn't hear everybody, but I couldn't unmute myself. Are we still on the?
We're still on, yep, the Coronavirus Relief Fund Act. If you want to weigh in here, please feel free, Mr. Beatty.
I'll, I'll just do it real quickly, and I apologize if somebody else has said something about this. I agree with what everybody had said before. The other thing I'd point out is that there is a, another question and answer on page nine of the Treasury Department's material, which makes it clear that all of the police or public safety costs can be used, and there's the, there is, these are Treasury Department regs, and I think, I was not on that conference that Mike and Brian are speaking about, but I think there was some concern about whether the state's regulations would contradict that, and there's a provision or another question on page seven that I think makes it clear that state can have different regulations, but only to the extent that they facilitate the federal regulations. All other regulations are prohibited. I think the ambiguity or the concern about this is, like some of the other programs that have come out under CARES, everything was done very quickly, and it's been a moving target. And so, everyone needs to watch the regs and watch other guidance to make sure that things aren't clarified in a way that changes matters. So, that's my comment.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Beatty. Good to know. All right, any, anybody else have questions or comments?
This is Shannon. I have a, I have two questions. From what I read, it, it appeared to me that the funds aren't eligible for items that were already budgeted for pre-COVID. How do you, how, how do you get around that with, because our public safety salaries and all of those costs were already budgeted for? And I, and I can't point to it in this document right here, but I remember reading in the document that funds aren't eligible for items that were budgeted pre-COVID. So, that's a question, then I have another one after you answer that.
Well, I can take a, you know, I have not heard that, Councilmember Bruce, so, but I am making a note of that, and when we, we can send in questions to the LMC staff that are coordinating this second part of the seminar series next week, and I can, I can certainly make that question known to them, and I don't know if you or anybody else from around the state has had that same question come up, but I will try to send that to them. But I have not heard that, pre-COVID budgeted items aren't eligible. I've not heard that at all.
Mr. Beatty, hold on just a second. Mr. Beatty?
Yes, Councilmember Bruce is correct. It's not in this document, but there is a general statement that to be eligible, the cost is a three-part test. The first part is that the costs have to be directly related to mitigating or something with regard to COVID. Second part, which is the one that Councilmember Bruce was mentioning, is that they can't be contained in a, in a current budget, a budget adopted post-March twenty-seventh, which is the date that the Federal CARES Act was adopted. And then there's a third part that I can't really remember. That on its face would seem to exclude the use of the funds for the police department, unless it was, you know, clear that they were doing something entirely different. Think reason that I am reading the document, personally, and I know other people are as well, is the language that Brian pointed out, which is in that second question and answer, where it says that there is a presumption for administrative convenience and basically to comply with the intent of the statute. There is a presumption that public safety costs are included, and that's buttressed by the other question and answer that I pointed out, which says, and you can use all of those costs. So, I think that, that, the way I'm reading that is that that is an exception to the general rule.
Public safety is the exception, nothing else, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, it's public, it's public health, public safety, a number of things. I think the only one of those that Minutista has is gonna be public safety, but I, I think the language is that those are deemed to be exceptions from those other rules.
Okay. Ms. Bruce, you had a second question, or does that answer your question?
Oh, yeah, the, the second question has to do with interest. If we were to take the five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars and put it into an interest-bearing account, are there rules about using the interest that's earned for certain things? And can we keep the interest?
That, that's a good question. Councilmember Bruce, what we did and what are, with the reason you even saw probably in the claims, there was a two-point-five-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand transferred to four, you know, our four M investment account. Of that, the five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five seventeen was the amount directly related to the COVID aid. We've set up a separate account with our sub-account at our four M Investment Money Market Fund to be able to track that separately, because there was some guidance we got from the four M fund that that should not be co-mingled with the other funds. Or I think specifically your question.
Okay.
Well, and there, this was again Ron Beatty, I think the answer is you, you can use the interest, but only for the same purposes that you can use the main part of the money. In other words, if we, we're, we're gonna make a little bit of interest over the course of time, and we can use that for the same purposes as the five seventy-nine.
Okay. But not just for anything we want.
Correct.
Correct.
And I, I think I read that in here. I couldn't tell you what page it's on, but I thought I read something about the interest in it, so.
Well, I, I, yeah, I'm not, I'm not that smart. I read it somewhere here too. You know, this is eleven pages of many, many pages of this stuff, and so, if it's not in this document in the packet, it's in one of the other documents, but that is specifically dealt with, and so, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other questions or comments regarding the relief fund and the funds coming, or with Minutista at this time, I guess?
So, this will come back to council when you clarify what we can use these funds for and not, and then the council will approve the use of the funds, correct?
Well, yes, we certainly can't spend, spend those monies without your approval, but I think that's where, I think with five people on the council, we might get five different ideas on what to do with that money. So, obviously, we're gonna have to have a discussion about that, but, you know, before we even dive into that, we wanted to at least give you an update on where we're at since our last meeting five weeks ago, and then also let you know that, you know, there is still some clarity needed, and we'll be participating in another survey and, or seminar, and we hope to bring some, some information back. And then, at that point in time, based on rules that were given, we'll certainly engage the council on a discussion about how you want to spend the money, absolutely, so.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it wouldn't be necessarily spending the five seventy-nine. We know what that has to be earmarked for, but it may be if, for instance, we can spend it all on the police department for salaries or whatever, then the police department's fund would go to the general fund or the overage, and that's what we would then discuss as to how we want to handle that.
Correct.
This, this, this fund, though, has a variety of, of ways that you can spend it. I mean, you can, you can set up grants and loans to businesses, and there's all kinds of things, and I think the council needs to weigh in on that, and obviously, not tonight, but when it comes back to council, I think, like you said, I think other council members are gonna have other ideas, and we can talk about it then.
Right. All right, so, we'll move on then. Persons to be heard, do we have any emails to be read, Mr. Broni?
Mayor and council, we do not.
All right, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items. Are there any items you wish to remove?
This is Shannon. I just wanted to remove item D, the minutes from July ninth.
Okay, D as in dog, correct?
Yes.
All right, all right. So, with that, that leaves us approving the work. Okay?
Oh, this is Pam. I have a question on item, on line E for approving claims.
Okay, all right. So, we have that, anybody else? Otherwise, that leaves consent agenda item A, is that approve work session meeting minutes from June first, 2020. B is approve work session meeting minutes from June fifteenth, 2020. C is approve city council regular meeting minutes from June fifteenth, 2020. And F is approve the status change and market increase for Gary Nelson, building inspector. And G is a resolution to approve the market increase for Robert Goodman, our building official. There are a motion to approve items, consent agenda items A, B, C, F, and G.
This is John, so moved.
All right, Mr. Schumpel made that motion. Is there a second?
This is Shannon, I'll second.
Okay, motion has been seconded by Ms. Bruce, and will, all those in favor signify with aye. Mr. Maliter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
Mr. Schumpel?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
And Lisa Whelan, myself, aye. That's five oh on items A, B, C, F, and G. Let's start with approve the city council special meeting minutes from July ninth. Ms. Bruce, you had some questions on that one?
Yes, on page forty-nine, at the bottom of that page, there's a paragraph, and I believe this, this was a council meeting where motions were made and voted on, and that last paragraph just says that council decided, but I, I remember, I specifically remember making a motion to remove that, that line, which it states that it, it, it was a motion with a four oh vote, and I think the minute should reflect that.
It was part, it was part of the motion, I believe.
Yeah, but, but there's no motion in the minute.
Um. I thought I read somewhere, well, I thought I read somewhere that, again, I, I'm at a loss here because I don't have my computer. Well, whatever, the motion was made eliminating that last paragraph.
Correct. Yeah, and it passed four zero, but it's not reflected in the minute.
Okay, so, all we need to do is say the motion was made eliminating the last paragraph, seconded, and motion passed five oh. Is that everybody's reflection?
I think it was four oh. It was four oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, because it was unanimous because Pam was absent. I'm sorry about that. Okay, so, Ms. Lindquist, can you make that change, and then we can approve it tonight, rather than having to bring it back? Uh-oh, who did we miss? Hello?
Hi, Madam Mayor, this is Ally. We can make that.
Oh, oh, okay, somebody, hello?
Yes. We're here.
Can anybody hear me? Okay, I was muted. I, I had, somebody didn't, I don't know, I had muted myself, and then when I tried to unmute, it would not unmute me. My apologies, I thought I had saved the motion in there, but apparently, when I saved the document, it didn't save it. So, I, I'm, let me bring this one back to the council meeting next time. I didn't have the motion in there, and it should be in there, and that was part of the, the discussion, and the motion also had that in there, so.
Right. Okay, all right, well, you can bring it back, back then.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, all right. All right?
Thank you.
And then we'll move on to item number E. Ms. Mortenson, you said you had some questions on approving the claims? Uh, Ms. Mortensen, you said you had, um, some questions on approving the claims?
Yes, on page fifty-three, um, there was a cost for dust abatement. Um, and then also it showed up on page fifty-eight. And I just thought it was odd that that crossed the same month, and they were different amounts. So I just, I'm just wondering, uh, why that would have crossed in the same month like that.
Well, uh, Mayor and Councilmember, uh, Mortensen, I'm going to take a stab at this, and then I'll let Gary chime in if I blow anything. So if the council recalls, we went to doing dust to me, dust abatement ourselves through our public works department instead of purchasing dust abatement services through a contracted vendor. Our vendor costs about sixty-seven thousand a year. And those two purchases, you see the one on July first is probably for the month of June or thereabouts. And the one near the end of July is, um, again, probably for July or thereabouts. And so what Gary has told me is that they try to get out there about, about once a month, sometimes a little shorter, sometimes a little longer, depending on the weather and a whole bunch of other factors. But, well, once they do that, you know, if they do, if, if they, uh, put down the dust abatement chemical about four or five times during the summer, uh, that's about a thirty to forty thousand dollar cost. So just right then and there, we're doing five times as much dust abatement, uh, for at least twenty thousand dollars less money. So again, that was why we brought this forward to the council a number of years ago. So you're just seeing a couple of purchases of the, uh, salt brine solution, et cetera, that goes into doing that work. So if I'd missed anything, Gary, you want to, uh, uh, correct it?
Nope, that's perfect, yeah, the first one was for the first round and the second round was, uh, we did have a council meeting on the first, that's why you're seeing it both. Um, the first one would have gone, if it would have been normal, the first one would have gone on the, during the first part of the council meeting, the first part of the month of July, we skipped it, that's why you're seeing two on this one.
Okay. I just thought it was odd, that's all. And by the way, I've been getting some really good comments on the road that I live on, that you guys are doing a great job on a road. So thank you.
Good, yeah, yeah, we've got it down now, we finally got it figured out after all this time, how to do it and do it right, and we've had great results.
Much appreciated.
Yeah, good to hear. Um, all right, so then is there any other questions regarding claim? Otherwise, uh, Ms. Mortensen, did you want to make a motion to approve claim?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
This is Shannon, I'll second.
All right, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Ms. Bruce for claims. All those in favor signify with aye. Uh, Mr. Malater?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperlin?
Aye.
Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And Lisa Whalen, aye. Motion passes five oh. So that concludes our consent agenda items, and we'll move on. We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to our business items. First business item is to accept the quotes and award a contract for the twenty-twenty sewer lining project. I believe that's, is that Adam or, or Ms. Fowski?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, that'd be me, Adam here. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yep, we can now, yep.
All right, so as you stated, this is, um, a memo item here to accept the quote and award the co-contract for the twenty-twenty sewer lining project. Um, so we worked on putting together the quote package for this project. And, um, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, when that was presented, this is just, uh, in an effort to repair the city's, uh, sanitary sewer and actually some storm sewer infrastructure. And, um, we're going to be using a lining methodology, so it's really low impact. And you make repairs to leaking pipes throughout the city. So we prepared a quote package for this project and reached out to three contractors, uh, Visu Sewer, In situ Form Technologies, and Granite Inliner. I, both Visu Sewer and In situ Form have worked in the city in the past. Um, we received two quotes back, we didn't hear from the third contractor, um, or they chose not to provide a quote. The low quote was in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. And that was just, um, a little bit lower than the, the other quote received, and just slightly higher than the estimated construction cost of the repair. And what we found after taking calls, um, during the quote period, um, was that some of the prices were increased because, um, some of the sewer mains that we're working on repairing are along the lakefront, uh, in like the hardscrabble area. So they're kind of hard to access with their equipment. Um, so that added to the cost a little bit, but we do need to get out there, especially on those mains, um, close by the lake and, and get these repairs done. So, um, overall, it was in the ballpark of what we had estimated for construction. And, um, we would recommend, uh, awarding the quote or accepting the quote, um, in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. And, um, and then entering into a contract with Visu Sewer for that work. Um, so we have a, we have the quote tab in there if you want to look at the bid items that were included. And, uh, then we have a resolution just, um, awarding that contract to Visu Sewer. And I'll take any questions on this project if there are any.
Thank you, um, Adam, so anybody have questions? I just have one, um, I'm, I know that, uh, Visu Sewer, they've, they've done work in our city before, haven't they?
Yeah, I, I, they, yeah, Madam Mayor, good question. I, I, I'm pretty sure they did the last sewer lining project.
Okay.
Sometimes I interchange these two companies, but they've, they've certainly worked in the area, and I believe they've worked at the city before. Gary, do you, are you familiar with the project recently where they've worked in the city?
Yes, all, they both have worked here, along with Lemetti and Sons doing lining in our city. So all through, all, both of them.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, um, we're familiar with the companies, and, um, we just lost power. Um, and also that, um, that they're reputable companies, that's all. And so if we've done work with them and, and you've worked with them, Gary, um, I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, that's a great question, Madam Mayor.
No problem with either one of them.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have questions? All right, um, is there a motion then to pass the resolution to accept the quotes and award the contract for the twenty-twenty sewer lining project to Visi, Vizu Sewer, um, in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars?
So moved, this is council member Malater.
Okay, Mr. Malater made that motion, is there a second? I'm sorry, is there a second? Um, okay, I'll second that. Okay, John, you'll second that, thank you. Um, are there any other questions? All right, hearing none, then I'll take the vote. Um, Ms. Bruce, how do you vote? Okay, uh, we can't hear you, maybe you're still on mute. I'll get back to you. Um, Ms., are you there?
Madam Mayor, this is, uh, Madam Mayor, this is council member Malater. Um.
Yep.
When you noted that the power went off, my power went off at the same time. And if Ms. Bruce is down via video conference, she may have lost her connection, so maybe the issue here.
Okay, so wait a little bit. Um, so, Mr. Malater, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, okay, Ms. Mortensen? Did we lose Ms. Mortensen as well?
Madam Mayor, this is Ally, I just got off the phone with Mike, he lost power at City Hall as well. So there's a very real possibility this meeting might go down. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. So, um, I'll see if he, he said he was going to restart.
Okay, I think we've lost Ms. Bruce and Ms. Mortensen too.
Yep, it looks like Paul Falls as well.
Okay.
Uh, this is, this is council member Malater. Um.
Yeah.
I don't know about you, uh, Ms. Whalen, but my power just came back, so.
Yeah, mine is back too now.
Yep, and it looks like the meeting is still running, so we should be okay.
Okay. We'll just, we'll wait a little bit, we'll give it a little, uh, while they, um, I, I'm guessing their power is going to be back on. John Trumperlin, are you still there?
I'm still here, I've got a notice on the screen now that being Mike is gone, Brony, who's the organizer,
Okay.
says it's gonna, says it'll end it in five minutes if he doesn't get back.
Oh, okay, all right.
Hold on, this is Ally, I'm going to try and, I'm going to try and see if I can keep it running on his end, so let me see what I can do here.
I'm just wondering if you had cons, that's okay, I'm, I'm just wondering if you had concerns about that? They've only budgeted three hundred dollars for traffic control.
Yeah, that's a great question, um, thank you for that, I, I, I see that now. Um, I guess they don't have concerns what I think would may happen, and, um, it, it, it depends on, you know, these guys work in tight situations all the time, they have to access manholes that are right in the middle of the roadway. And so they're setting up their van and their equipment and their personnel. And, um, that's kind of the nature of their work day in and day out. Um, I can never speak to why certain project managers at, you know, estimators at contractors put money in certain areas on bid items. Um, so it could be that they're putting the price of their traffic control into some of their line items and building that into the cost. Um.
Okay.
Bottom line is the specifications will require traffic control. We have personnel that would be inspecting this work that would say, hey, this doesn't meet any Minnesota, um, traffic control, um, manual, uniform traffic control devices layout, and we need to correct it. So though they're not going to get paid a lot for that specific item, if this project went forward, you know, our inspection staff would hold them to having a safe work zone that, uh, vehicles could get around.
Okay, thank you, Adam. They probably built it into other areas so that, yeah, maybe.
This is council member Malater, um, Adam, you had mentioned that a lot of this work is going to be done on hardscrabble, where it's going to be in the backyards of people, um, that obviously wouldn't require traffic control. So, um, estimate may have been a little bit higher because of that, and that, as you've said, made up in other areas. But I think that might be a lot of it, that's where they're doing the work.
Absolutely, absolutely, great point.
Yeah, all right, any other questions? So I'll get back, um, a motion was made and seconded, so, um, we don't need to go through that again. But, um, it, with that then, I just need the vote from Ms. Bruce.
That's an aye.
Okay, and Ms. Um, um, Mortensen?
Aye.
Okay, so just to kind of reiterate, correct me if I'm wrong, but I voted aye, um, Mike Malater voted aye, and John Trumperlin voted aye. So that would be a five oh. All right, um, with that then, uh, we'll move on to, um, the next one, which is a resolution to accept quotes and award the contract for the twenty-twenty street overlay project. That one, uh, actually came in significantly less than what was estimated, which is good. So, um, Adam, I think that's you again?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, thank you, and as you pointed out, uh, it did come in less, um, which is, which is really good. And so this was, yeah, the twenty-twenty overlay project, um, it doesn't mention here in the memo item. Um, but this was to overlay three streets in town that were discussed at the last council meeting, um, as a preventative, um, pavement management project, um, just to get ahead of, you know, Gary's crews and public work staff having to go out and patch the same streets over and over and over again. So, um, that's basically the, um, uh, the purpose of this project, I guess I should say. And we reached out to and provided the quote package to four contractors, um, Allied Blacktop Company, Batumus Roadways, Northwest Asphalt, and W M Mueller and Sons. And, um, we received quotes back from all of them. So contractors were eager to, uh, perform this work and, um, and again, we had a flexible schedule in this, in the quote package, and, and maybe that's why we, um, we had people quoting on it. And for the most part, they were right in the neighborhood of each other, except for, um, the, the higher bidder. But the low quote was received from W M Mueller and Sons in the amount of ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety cents. Um, and you can see the other quotes, um, there in the agenda item listed out. And the estimated construction cost of the repair was a hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, and that included a five percent contingency. So significantly lower than we thought that this work would, um, cost. W M Mueller and Sons has done some work directly for public works. Uh, I believe, Gary, if you want to chime in on any work you can think of that they've done, but I know they've worked in town and you've appreciated their, uh, quality of work and working with them.
Yes, they did the Bayside Overlay and, um, well, through that year, um, Bayside, Crest Ridge, Court. Um, there's three different ones that they did that year. Oh, and Fairway, Fairway Ridge and Drive, Fairway Ridge Drive up there in the very north end of the city. So, yeah, they've been in here before, they're a great contractor, they, uh, very, very good contractor. They probably got the best blacktop mix, you know, on the market right now for the area.
Gary, you know.
That's really good news.
Yeah, that is, except, Gary, I recall when we did the Fairway Ridge and the Crest Ridge and so on, um, that there were some issues, and it was, there was issues trying to get that, them back in to finish up the work because they had to kind of hold off, they had to stop because of the Crest Ridge situation. And then they had to come back, and it just took forever and ever and ever to get them back. So I want to make sure that even if they do good work, that they're still going to do this timely and efficiently because I know it was a huge inconvenience for a lot of our residents up there.
Well, this is just a simple mill and overlay, we're not taking it all the way off, we're doing an edge mill on, o-only an edge mill on, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, on three street where the curb is, it's just an edge mill with an overlay and a, a straight overlay and everything. So we won't be running into the issue where we mill it off, we run out of, uh, base structure, so everything's staying intact. So I don't see an issue with this.
That's correct, and I could, Madam Mayor, add to just how we've worded the, and drawn up the specifications for the project. It allows for a ten-day working period. And these streets are all really, uh, cen-centrally located to each other, and they're close by in proximity. And so through the contract, we're requiring them to get in and be done in ten days. Um, so hopefully that provides some comfort, I guess.
Okay, all right, anybody else have questions?
Um, this is Shannon, and I, I'm not sure this is an appropriate question right now, but, um, since we're saving around thirty thousand dollars on this, and, um, Fielding Trail is the only street that, uh, uh, was a connector to Game Farm Road that wasn't included in this project, I'm wondering if it might be appropriate to look at adding fielding to the, to the streets, to the project for overlays?
Yeah, thank you, uh, council member Bruce. We can look into that if the council, um, would like us to. We could, what we do first and foremost is check our data on that street and look at the most recent OCI value and make sure that it's a, it's a candidate for this proposed work. Um, but.
Yeah, it, it, it was.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, it, it, it was when we evaluated these streets, and the reason we didn't is we just didn't have enough money to include it. Um, but the, the OCI was, was, it, worse than, as, as bad or worse than the other roads that were, were there. But it wasn't bad enough that it was reconstructed.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
This is Ally.
Go ahead.
So, um, I, I concur with, um, council member Bruce. Uh, when we were, uh, discussing overlay candidates with the council, we did have fielding on the list, um, and just took a look at the scope of work and, um, scoped it according to what was quoted there. And then, you know, certainly if the council would like to, like us to take a look at adding fielding to the project, we could certainly look into that and come back to the council at the next meeting.
Yeah, my recollection was, is that we had like a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, but we also were constrained because if we went over a certain amount, then we'd have to go out for, um, not just quotes, but we'd have to go out, do the bidding process. And so that was the other thing and that was the, a timing issue. So, um, I, I wouldn't have a problem, um, if we know it's gonna fall within our budget and also if it doesn't delay, uh, the other, the other part of the project that we're approving this evening. So in other words, can you just go back to Mueller and Sons and say, are you interested in adding this? Or do we have to do the whole bidding process again?
Madam Mayor, we can, we can speak with Mueller and Sons and see what their price would be on it. We should be able to hold them to the quoted price that they've already provided. Um, cause through the contract, we are able to increase or decrease quantities as needed with, with no change in their quoted price. Um, that ninety-three thousand and I think about five hundred tons of mix would be needed for fielding. So that's in the neighborhood of another thirty thousand dollars to do fielding and, and, uh, don't hold me to that. It's just rough. So we can have a conversation about it right now. Um, which would put us at like a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, so if, that's probably the neighborhood we'd be. So we'd be below that threshold. And we could work with them to see if they wanted to add it. I think that it's, it's a good idea and, um, if it fits in with the budget, I think it's a great idea, actually.
Okay. Um, Council, um, Mr. Maliter, do you wanna weigh in?
Um, I'm okay with it, uh, so long as we don't have to redid. I mean, obviously we wouldn't be going to anyone else except Mueller in this case. And i- if it comes in kind of as Adam described, I'm, I'm fine with that.
All right. And, um, Mr. Chumpelin?
I agree with everyone else. Uh, my only question, kind of like Mr. Maliter, was, uh, not to hold this up, but then do we approve this tonight or is that shelved until our next meeting? Where it might be amended to add fielding?
My recommendation would be to approve the resolution that we have in front of us tonight. And then staff will go back to Mueller and Sons and say, are you interested or, um, to do Fielding Trail? And then figure out what the exact cost would be and bring that additional work back to the council at our next council meeting. Is that kind of what you were thinking, Adam?
Yeah, I think that is a perfect plan, Madam Mayor.
Okay, does that answer?
I was gonna, or if I can, Madam Mayor and Council, like, yeah, the only, I think I'd add on to Councilmember Maliter and Chumpelin's, um, questions, you know, I just wanna make sure that, I know usually the general rule for quotes is twenty-five thousand, but because we're adding to something that we originally quoted, is that okay to do? I just wanna make sure our engineers check that we're following the proper processes if we get, for when our auditors, if they look at this quote package, say we follow the proper processes to add this street in.
Madam Mayor, if I may jump in, um, certainly I, I agree with, with, um, Mr. Grimm that we would, we would look at this as a summative amount that would be with Mueller. Um, so per, per your recommendation, um, very per your suggestion, Madam Mayor, I would recommend that the council consider the contract, um, as presented this evening. And then at the next council meeting, um, once, um, at Mr. Gadbo and I have an opportunity to, um, take a look at, um, where Mueller's price would be to add in fielding, we can then go and see if that would fall, if the total project cost would still fall within that quotable, um, that quotable amount, um, that we, we would be under that amount and then bring an update to the council at the next meeting, either in the, um, in the way of a change order, um, to add that in or just simply an update saying this is the price that we got in and, and we wouldn't fall in within that quotable, um, amount anymore.
So, um, Ms. Fowski, can you answer, is the quotable amount one twenty-five or one fifty?
I would, I'd have to take a look at my, I thought we were up in, I thought we went up to one fifty or one seventy-five. But I, I, I'll check at my, I have it written down at my desk.
So, yeah, we need to find out. So I think what, oh, it's one seventy-five. Okay. All right. So we would most likely be um, within the guidelines and within, in all of the state statutes then.
I would think so, yes.
Okay, all right. All right. So, um, Ms. Mortensen, do you wanna weigh in?
Um, I agree with everything. The only thing is if we're going back to look, uh, at, uh, the cost and all of that, could we make sure that there wasn't any other borderline road? I mean, was, uh, fielding the, uh, top of the list for to be done next? Uh, cause I don't recall and I don't have my notes in front of me, uh, cause I know there was more than just, uh, that one road that was discussed.
My, my recollection is because the feeder streets to Game Farm Road or Sterling Drive Retreat and Game Farm Circle, that fielding is in the area and that was why it was being considered with all the others. And that, that's, that's one of the reasons why it makes sense to do it.
Okay, I just wanted to have double check that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, good, good comments and questions. All right. So, um, Ms. Fowski and Mr. Gadbo, you'll bring that back then with the additional. And tonight we're gonna look at accepting the quotes and awarding the contract for the 2020 Street Overlay Project, um, and awarding it to M, um, M W Mueller and Sons in the amount of ninety-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety cents. Is there a motion to that effect?
This is John T. So moved.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chumpelin. Is there a second?
I'll second that. This is Councilmember Maliter.
This is Shannon. I'll second.
Um, Mr. Maliter, be to Ms. Bruce. So, Mr. Maliter seconded that. So any further questions or discussion? All right, hearing none then. Uh, we'll go down the line. Mr. Maliter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Um, Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
Mr. Chumpelin?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
And, uh, Lisa Whalen, I vote aye. So motion passes five oh, and we'll see the addition or the, we'll call it a change order at our next council meeting. So I wanna also make sure when you check, um, Adam and Allison, when you check with, um, Mueller and Sons, I would like to make sure that they're still gonna be able to do all of the work within the timeframe that's on this original contract. That would be the other question. I think the end date was, was it September fifteenth? Wasn't that the end date?
That sounds correct. I don't have the project manual in front of me, but it was, yeah, it was before it gets too cold out, that's for sure.
Right. So we want, I wanna make sure that the end date is no later than the original one. So, all right. With that then, uh, we'll move on to, um, authorize the state payment request for the Halsted Drive Street Reconstruction Project. Is that Ms. Fowski or Mr. Grimm? Which one?
Madam Mayor, um, that is my item for, for discretion this evening. And so, uh, before the council this evening is, um, a request to increase, um, the amount of state aid funds that, uh, were to be applied to the Halsted Drive Reconstruction Project. Uh, to provide counsel, a little bit of background, um, since it's been some time since the state aid portion of this project, um, funding was, was discussed. Uh, back in two thousand seventeen, when the project was awarded, um, the city had a state aid fund balance, um, that was just, just around one point nine million. And at that point, um, when the project was awarded, the council looked at, uh, having one point, just over one point three million dollars, um, in state aid funds to be requested to be reimbursed for the project. Now, in this project, the, the amount of work that is eligible for state aid funding exceeds that one point three million. So at the conclusion of this project, now that we're getting all the final items wrapped up, um, we had, I had a discussion with Mr. Grimm and to determine where we were at for final project costs. And, um, the number that we came up with, this eleven thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-three cents is what we're recommending and, um, additional state aid, uh, funding for this project, um, to make the, uh, city amount, the city funds spent on this project equal to what was originally anticipated when the project was awarded. Um, so if the council, uh, chooses to authorize it this evening, I can send in paperwork to get the, um, the reimbursements, um, from city, uh, pardon me, from the state.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions? All right. Um, so is there a motion then to authorize, um, staff to re- um, request, I guess, um, reimbursement for the Halsted, uh, Drive Reconstruction Project?
This is Pam. So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
This is Michael. Second.
All right, thank you. So Mr. Maliter seconded that. Motion has been made and seconded. Um, any further questions? Hearing none then. All those in favor signify with aye. Ms. Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Chumpelin?
Aye.
Um, Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And Mr. Maliter?
Aye.
And I'm Lisa Whalen. I vote aye. Motion passes five oh. So we will move on to the next one, which is discussion of the local emergency order declaration. Mr. Baroni?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, I will start this discussion, but I will also ask, uh, Chief Falls and Ron Beatty to weigh in. Um, we've discussed this, uh, at our last council meeting and probably the one before that as well, or maybe it was the one before that. I forget exactly which meetings, but nonetheless, the idea, um, brought forward back then was to revisit this topic um, once we get to this meeting, uh, tonight here in July. Um, the information that, uh, Chief Falls was getting through his emergency management, uh, team, uh, was that there was going to be a peak in late June or, and into July. Um, I think we've seen that nationally, um, where we still have just a, an unbelievable amount of the COVID virus taking place. I think I saw something late last week that forty of the fifty states have seen an increase in the last month. Uh, it's, which includes actually Minnesota, but it's a small increase, but it is an increase. Um, so the discussion that we had was that we did not have any, um, any reason, we believe, to lift the local emergency order at this time. We don't feel like there's been any real improvement uh, that we've seen. Um, you know, so that, that's kind of our take. Uh, we were, uh, hoping to have this discussion tonight, understanding that there might be a difference of opinion uh, by some of the council members. That's, uh, we do understand that. Uh, but, uh, I think at this point, before we maybe start, uh, diving into it with the council, I'll let, uh, both, uh, Chief Falls and Ron Beatty talk a little bit about it. So, Chief?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Baroni. Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, Mr. Baroni, as he stated, uh, we have had this conversation a number of times. And so I won't go through everything all over again, but, uh, I'll just kind of hit some highlights. And I think one thing that's important to point out is that the last time we had this discussion, uh, I think, uh, we were kind of in a position where this virus had, uh, pretty much leveled out at that time. Uh, and now since that, uh, I think things have gotten worse. Um, we're starting to see, uh, an uptick, uh, where we were seeing dozens of new cases each day. Now we're seeing hundreds of new cases each day here in Minnesota. Um, and so that's certainly concerning. Uh, additionally, I know there is a neighboring department that has one officer out that is COVID positive. Um, I think they're awaiting test results on one or two others. Uh, so we are starting to see this creep into, uh, our lake area community. Uh, we certainly hope that it doesn't spread, uh, much further than it already has, but, uh, I think it's inevitable when you're around people and, and responding to calls with people that have COVID. So, uh, with that said, uh, obviously you're aware of the statistics nationally where we're seeing a number of states where this has reached critical levels. And that's what they're working so hard in Minnesota to prevent. Uh, because again, the fear is that, uh, the cases will outpace the, our, our ability or capacity for our healthcare system to provide care. And so we're doing absolutely everything we can to, to, uh, prevent that. So, um, with that said, obviously I'm still in meetings weekly, uh, with other emergency managers, um, who, many of which have been doing this a lot longer than I have, uh, as well as experts in the healthcare field. And, uh, for the reasons that, uh, I've stated here so far and, and at the advice of, of many experts and other emergency managers, it would certainly be my recommendation that we allow this emergency order to remain in place. I understand that the council is uncomfortable with just an indefinite period of time. And, and I am too. I, I don't think that that's what I'm asking for, but I think maybe we start to look at this in pieces and, and, uh, maybe reevaluate this every thirty or sixty days. But, uh, I think right now we're experiencing a pretty significant uptick. Uh, and so this just doesn't feel, from my perspective, like the right time to remove this. Uh, and I think I've said before, uh, I, there's, I don't see any, absolutely any harm in, in allowing this to, to remain in place so that we are as, uh, positioned as best we can be in the event that we need to, uh, to take action. Um, so with that, uh, I guess I'll, uh, let Mr. Beatty chime in from his perspective as well.
Mr. Beatty? Did we lose Ron?
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes. Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, all right. There's been a problem, but I'm muting, uh, tonight. Um, I agree with what both Mr. Baroni and Chief Falls said. You know, we talked about this several times. Not to repeat everything, but I think the reason that staff felt that it made sense to keep the emergency order in place, where it invokes the powers of both the statute and the, uh, local ordinance, which allows us to buy things on an emergency basis and not comply with bidding and other requirements, which I don't think we've done. But it's still in a, it's a power out there that we could use if necessary. Now, I kind of view it like, um, uh, a line of credit. You don't need it until you need it. The other reason that we've talked about is that it may, not positive, but it may be important if we seek reimbursement from FEMA for any of the costs. Uh, I think they have still not decided whether they, FEMA have decided whether having a local emergency in place is necessary, but again, it certainly doesn't hurt. And as the chief has been indicated, I, I think that it shows solidarity with the other, uh, lake area police departments. And I weigh those goods against the, the bads, and I don't see any bads. I know several people have mentioned that, several council members mentioned that the last, uh, time we discussed it in detail that they were uncomfortable with it being indefinite. Uh, the council can re- revoke this at any time. So it, it's something that's completely within the council's, uh, authority. Uh, I sort of thought a little bit about what, what kind of metric could be used. And I think probably the logical one would be to pin the existence of the local uh, emergency on state emergency. When the state goes away, the local one probably should go away unless there's some particular local issue. The other thing I explored a little bit was, is there some sort of health metric that we could, we could use, cases going down over a certain period of time or whatever you would wanna come up with? I didn't find any practical way to do that because I don't think we would have the data available at, at a local enough level to allow us to do that. So, I, I think that's a summary that staff's position is pretty much the same as we were several months ago.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Um, Mr. Baroni, any, anything else?
Uh, no, I don't have anything else, Mayor. Um, I'm interested to hear what the council members have to say about this topic.
Okay. Um, so I'll open it up for discussion here. Um, Mr. Maliter, any comments or questions or?
Um, I guess my only comment is if we decide not to take action tonight, um, I would like us to have another checkpoint like we did with this meeting. like us to have another checkpoint like we did with this meeting at some point in the not too distant future. But I want to save any, any additional suggestions on timing for that after the rest of the council has chimed in.
Sure, okay. Ms. Bruce?
Thank you. You know, I think, I think the question we have to ask ourselves is, today, would this council approve an emergency order going into effect today that would last indefinitely, which is what we have in front of us? And from my perspective, the answer is no. I, I, I wouldn't approve an emergency order going into effect today. I, I did back in March, because that was a different world then. And the truth of the matter is, is that the mayor can call it emergency again at any time that it's necessary. So revoking this emergency order now doesn't preclude the mayor from invoking it again if it's necessary. So there's no harm in rescinding it now. And when, I want to talk about the FEMA expenses too. I sat in on a workshop for the FEMA expenses, and one of the questions was, are emergency orders necessary to be in effect to get FEMA money? And the answer was no. And I, I don't know if any other staff members were sitting in on that call. It was conducted through the LMC. And I, I just, and I hear, and I respect, you know, Chief Falls and wanting to do the right thing, but I, I have trouble thinking of what, what action would be taken that, that you foresee when, when we just said that we've already seen the peak, and actually, a lot of the, the numbers that we're seeing are actually due to more testing, not necessarily to an increase in new cases. They're just testing more. And the morbidity rate is coming down. And to me, it seems like this has run its course, and I don't see any need to, to keep this emergency order in place. And I would vote to rescind it.
Okay, Mr. Trumperland?
I don't see that anything has basically changed. Minnesota is probably one of the better states in relation to the numbers that are coming back, but we're just under the five percent threshold that the national experts have set. I don't see a reason for removing it, only if then in the future, we have to go through the process of resetting it. I don't see the ramifications of leaving it in place for the time being. Now, I'd agree with everybody here that it's not an open-ended thing, that we need to try to set a date, but I don't see that date being now.
Okay, Ms. Mortensen?
I am very uncomfortable with having a date being indefinite, and I think we all were. I, I do respect what we heard from our police, Paul Falls and our attorney, but I would like to review this, maybe at the next council meeting again, and keep reviewing it, because I am hearing as well, different test results than what some of the media is saying. So I, I don't even know if the numbers are being accurately reported at this time, to do a, you know, a real consensus of what is really going on out there. So I'd say keep it up, and then up until another fifteen, until our next meeting, and review it again, I think at every council meeting.
Well, so I'll weigh in here. I think more importantly, if, even if we don't look at the state, overall state statistics, if we look at the current, our area, when the chief is telling me that we have an emergency management, we have an individual that has been tested positive, and another one is being tested, that, that is more of a concern to me than statewide or even countrywide statistics. When I'm seeing an uptick in our own community, that, that's more concerning to me. And that's what the chief is telling us is happening right now. And that's why I agree with everything that's been said. We don't need to have this on indefinitely, and I don't think we should go away this evening saying, well, we'll just leave it on until whenever. I think Mr. Malator said he would be comfortable leaving it on with the understanding that we have an agreed-upon next check-in date. So I think we need to keep checking in and making sure that we're still on course or that, that there's an appropriate time to remove it. I'm not sure it's right now, so I agree with, with Mr. Trumperland. So what I would recommend, we can certainly talk about it at our next meeting, but do we want to do this at every meeting, or do we want to do it maybe thirty days from now at our second meeting in August? That might be my question. I don't know if something's going to change that much in the next couple of weeks. It may change significantly, bad or good, hopefully good, within the next thirty days. So that, that would be my recommendation. Let's do a check-in again at our second meeting in August. Just my, my recommendation.
This is Shannon. I, I would rather see an expiration date certain, where we decide that this emergency order expires, and then if, if it's determined that we need to invoke it again, we can do so. But this checking in every meeting, or every, you know, every two weeks, or whatever, I, I would like a date certain that this expires. And then, then we can always invoke it again if it's necessary.
Well, if we do an expiration date, I would highly recommend that we do at least sixty days out, and we do it till the end of, of September then, because we don't know what's going to happen, especially in our area, in our community here, even within the next couple of weeks. So if you want to do an expiration date, I would highly recommend the end of, end of September.
And I would recommend the next council meeting.
Okay, Mr. Trumperland?
If we set an expiration date, expiration date, and let's say we set it for a day following a scheduled council meeting, and when we get to that council meeting, the day before it's set to expire, things have escalated, because schools have opened up, and now it's spreading again. Can we at that meeting change the expiration date, or do we have to go through it once we've set it?
Mr. Beatty?
Madam Mayor and Council, no, in my opinion, you can always reverse it.
Okay. However, and your, your point is well made, Mr. Trumperland, with the schools opening, but we wouldn't know if that would trigger more cases. We wouldn't know that at the next council meeting, we wouldn't know that at the end of, of August, we wouldn't really know that until maybe even the end of September. That would be the earliest, I would think, that we'd start seeing an uptick in cases, if we're going to see it due to schools opening, which may be the case, I don't know.
And I, this is Shannon. I'd, I'd just like to do a reality check, because one of the things that we do know now, that we didn't know back in March, is that the morbidity rate of this virus is much, much lower than we, than anybody anticipated back in March. Most of the people that are, that are dying from this virus are living in nursing homes or group settings that are, they're elderly with underlying conditions. This, this virus is nowhere near as deadly as we thought it was in March. And to pretend that it is, when we all know that it, it's not, that, that's what's wrong with this. We're, we're declaring emergency order for something that's not necessary now.
Well, okay, I'm going to disagree with you on one count. It's not because of people dying, it's because of people getting sick and being very sick and not able to do their jobs. That's, that's the reality of it. And that's what the chief is concerned about, that if his guys and gal, if, if our officers get sick, they may not die, but they may not be able to perform their jobs. In fact, they wouldn't be able to, because they'd have to quarantine. So a lot of people, sure, are not dying of it, but, excuse me, a hundred and forty thousand individuals have died. And that's a lot of people. And if, even if you're one of the very low-risk people, and you end up dying because of it, that's not good. I mean, we have children dying of it.
Well, let's, let's bring this back to the city of Minnetrista, because let's bring this back to what-
That's what I'm trying to do.
A city concern. And if, if Chief Falls has people, if, if we have people that, that come down with COVID-19, and they, we need to have other people work for them, we don't need an emergency order to, to pay overtime, or to hire, to, to make, to give those hours to other people. The emergency order isn't necessary. I'm not talking about people dying, and whether they should die or not die, or not get sick. That's ridiculous. Of course, we don't want people to die or get sick. But as it relates to Minnetrista and the city, this emergency order is not necessary for anything that we're, that we would do. It's just, it's ridiculous.
Mr. Falls, Mr. Falls, aren't you under a budget, in that if there's overtime, and people are sick and they're out, wouldn't you need approval from the council to do additional pay or something, or how does that work?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, as you know, I have an overtime budget, which is, you know, typically, I don't exceed on an annual basis, but you, you just never know. And so the fear with COVID is that if a significant amount of our staff, or a significant amount of staff in the Lake area group that we're part of gets ill, and I have to send staff there or here to cover on overtime, I would exceed that overtime budget very, very quickly. So that's probably one of the most obvious areas where we would exceed our budget in a very short amount of time. And so the concern is, like I said, there aren't a lot of cases, but we know for a fact that we have one right next door to us, potentially more, and that's how it starts. And so that's one of the reasons that it's important to have the emergency order in place. I know that I've said before that all of the Lake area agencies have an emergency order in place, it's still in place, and we typically operate on the same page. So from my perspective, it's important to be part of that group and be operating similarly. And again, I, I don't see the harm in, in leaving it. As for the expiration date, I, ultimately, the council gets to make that decision, I don't, but that just seems like we're making a decision today based on things that we don't even know are going to occur, or may occur in the future. So that makes me very uncomfortable. I, I would rather revisit the issue every thirty days and have a discussion, and you can decide, based on what we're looking at, at that point, whether you want to remove it or, or leave it in place.
I have one more question for Mr. Falls, Chief Falls. We, we talked about, we've already seen the peak in late June, early July. Have you had to use the emergency powers for anything throughout this whole time?
No, to date, absolutely not. I have not, and that's what we're trying to prevent.
And, and also, I just want to say, we don't have a crystal ball. Nobody knows what's going to happen tomorrow, or the next day, or the next day. An asteroid could come, and we could have another emergency tomorrow. And I, I just, I get tired of hearing that we just don't know what's going to happen, and that's a reason to extend an emergency order. That is not a reason to extend an emergency order, because nobody knows what's going to happen tomorrow.
Councilmember Bruce, I, I would agree with that, absolutely. But on the other hand, a lot of my job is, is based on information that I get from other experts. And when all of those experts are saying, this is the right thing to do for the reasons that we've stated, and I understand that you disagree, that's fine. I, I have to err on the side of safety. And when the experts are telling me that's the best position to be in right now, then that's, that's why I'm recommending that, that's all.
And, and the reason this is so contentious, and I'll just put it out there, the politicization of this is what makes this contentious, is, and I think Councilmember Mortensen alluded to it too, we don't know what to believe anymore, because we have heard so many things that have been, that have conflicted, and the models that they use have not turned out to be anywhere near projecting what turned to be, turned out to be a reality. And so, and, and now, in this election season, it, it's become very political. And that's why we're having this discussion, is because I, I for one, am tired of the politicization of this issue, and having emergency orders in place when they're not needed. So I'm done.
Hello? You said, did we lose you? Oh, there you are. Okay, I'm sorry. My, my question was to Ms. Bruce, why do you object? Can anybody hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Mayor.
I can hear you. Okay, Ms. Bruce?
I object because having an, an emergency order around an issue that doesn't require an emergency order is only there to, to, to continue the fear and to, to just keep, keep the issue alive, when it, it doesn't require an emergency order. It, it perpetuates alarm in the community about COVID-19 far more than, than there should be. And that's why.
Okay, why do you think it perpetuates alarm?
Well, generally, we have emergency orders when we have an emergency. And emergencies usually are, are imminently, people are going to be harmed imminently, like a tornado, or a flood, or, you know, some kind of natural disaster, or something like that. And it's imminent, and it's quick, and it's, and this, this is not, this is not imminent, it's not quick. It's something that we've dealt with, we've dealt with H1N1 and SARS and all kinds of things, and we've never had such, such, such panic and terror fed to us by the media and our local governments themselves. And that's why I object to it, is because it's not based in reality, and it's not based on any numbers that are hard and fast, and that make sense, and that are verifiable.
Does anybody else want to weigh in? Because we're, we should make a decision here this evening. I, I don't believe it perpetuates alarm or fear, if anything, it maybe will heighten our awareness of what's going on. I haven't received any emails or calls from people that are alarmed or fearful, or say that we're not doing the right thing. I'm not sure I, I agree with you on that one, but at any rate, we need to make a decision here this evening. I'm hearing from some that you're okay if we continue it, but we have to have at least another discussion. Some have said maybe putting an end date in place. And so, Mr. Malator, do you want to weigh in again?
I really don't have anything else to add. I mean, if, at this point, I don't think there was anything on the agenda to vote on. If someone wants to put a motion forward, then I think this is, we've had enough discussion. Anyone's welcome to put a motion forward.
That's true. The only, so is there any kind of a motion?
I will make a motion to-
Hold back one minute. If we look at the calendar, we have an August meeting on the seventeenth, and then the next meeting would be on September eighth. I think we, we talked about doing like a thirty-day, you know, review, and then-
I think we, we talked about doing like a thirty-day, you know, review and then, you know, which would bring us to either one of those two dates. I would like to review it at a maximum of thirty days. And, you know, just take it from there. Because I would like to see a definite end date to this. All right. So you want to review it at the me- it would have to be the August seventeenth meeting then? Seventeenth. That would be just, just a hair under thirty days, September eighth is a hair over. It would be a little over thirty days. Would be actually seven weeks, I believe. So, um-
Madam Mayor, may I make a motion?
You may do so if you'd like. Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to rescind the emergency order this evening.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Bruce to rescind the emergency order. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to the motion? Okay, hearing none, the motion fails. So with that, I would say, council then, I think there's a consensus that, by the majority anyway, that we at least want to revisit this either on the seventeenth or on the eighth of September. Is there a preference? Mr. Maliter?
Councilman, go ahead.
Sorry, go, go ahead. One of you.
I, I would be amendable to moving it, having the discussion again with a better idea of setting a date and put it on the agenda for the second meeting in August the seventeenth.
Okay. And Mr. Maliter?
I'm fine with that.
All right. And I believe, Ms. Mortenson, you said the same thing? Is that correct? All right. So we'll move this for another discussion on August seventeenth. So with that, we move on to our, so we don't need to make any decisions on that or motions. Staff has direction and it'll come back on the seventeenth. Administrative items, staff report. We move on. City Administrator, Mr. Barone?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, I'm scheduled to speak here, but there are three others, not just one other. The Finance Director will talk and then I'm also going to have the Engineer and the Public Works Superintendent. They both have items as well. My items. We did hold a remote meeting with the School District Representatives on Wednesday, June twenty-fourth, and Ms. Foskey is going to talk about that, but I just wanted to give everybody the date. That was shortly after our last council meeting. We did have a fire district discussion, July tenth, and we'll be meeting again in August and the council will be seeing some information after that meeting in August. And then, on Wednesday of this week, we have the Fire Commission meeting, the normal Fire Commission meeting. That's at eleven AM. That was just changed today to a Zoom call. We were going to try to meet in person, but I guess they decided to go with the Zoom call. So that'll happen this week. We did have on July fourteenth, last week, a meeting of the South, of a progress meeting on the Southwest Water Tower. There are some notes that I received after the packet was distributed, which I will include in the info packet for the August third city council meeting. But just quickly, they've did all the soil corrections and they're actually as completed as of July thirteenth, the foundation slab concrete pour. And so they're continuing their work and they're on track. And then also, just to refer you to the info packet, I did take a picture of our new front desk. We had, Gary did a terrific job of putting up the Plexiglas. And so if you look in your info packet at the very end, you'll see a picture of that. We have, I think it, it also includes the, the stickers on the carpeting that indicate for people to stay six feet apart, et cetera. So, just wanted you to see his work. Which I, like I said, he did a very good job. So with that-
Yeah, it looked very nice.
Yeah, he did a great job. So with that, I'm going to have Brian discuss real quick, and I think Chris may contribute to that if Brian doesn't cover everything. So Brian?
Oh, Madam Mayor, Council, just a real quick update. We did hit some dollars in mid-June to reimburse for the state for the presidential nominating primary. It was three thousand eight fifty-eight seventy-four to be exact. So, we did get some dollars to help with that, I guess, additional election that was back in February. So, that's, just wanted to give that quick report.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. And then you said, our engineer, is that Ms. Foskey or Mr.?
I think Allison's going to take this and then Gary will talk as well.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Foskey.
Yes, Madam, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, just to bring you up to date, I've been continuing with, Adam and I have been continuing with the biweekly updates. I hope that the council is finding good information in there. The, the local street improvement project is progressing well. The contractor is making good progress. I'm not aware of any issues that have arisen, either from a construction standpoint or a communication standpoint. So, we are on track, as far as I know, to, with the schedule for completion at the end of August for substantial completion and then all the final work, restoration and so on, to occur by the end of September. As Mr. Barone had mentioned, there was a meeting with representatives from the School District, a board member and superintendent at the end of June to discuss the traffic study. And then, what, what we did with that is we identified the next steps, both with council and then discussions with the, the School District with regards to the Sunnyfield project. And the next steps would be, per the council's request, we'll be coming back with an update on where we're at with the roads' funds balances at the first meeting in August, based on what we're seeing for the street improvement projects. We wanted to get far into the construction season to get a good handle on where we're at for budget for those projects. And then at that point, the council could see where the, the road budget was at to determine what to look for for 2021 projects, both local, and then we would have the Sunnyfield Road project. So we would look to have a discussion with the council at a future, at a future meeting with regards to some of the feedback we heard from the School District with regards to pedestrian movements and how we can best facilitate that so that a scope can be well-defined and brought to the council for approval to start the preliminary process for that project. So, we'll be seeing, we'll be seeing that start in, in August. And then again, to that point, you know, we were looking at the 2021 local improvement projects and once we get some direction on what all to include within that, we can get a scope in front of the council for consideration. And we'll also talk about neighborhood meeting with residents. As we did, my understanding is the council would like to take a look at doing that meeting, neighborhood meeting before starting the feasibility process so that we can make sure that there's some, for the most part, resident support of a project for proceeding with that. So we'll take a look at plugins and some dates for that as well.
All right, thank you. And I have to say, thank you both, Adam and Allison, for your biweekly updates. Those have been very good. So thank you for that.
Glad you liked them. You're very welcome.
Yep. All right. Anything else under?
Yep, Gary's got a couple of topics to discuss. So Gary?
All right.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council, I just want to give you an update on our progression with our tower rehab at the Sunnyfield site. Oseo was out here, Oseo Construction, who is the main contractor, was out early or mid-June, got a jump start. They had a crew available. They came out and did actually some pre-welding of the tabs on top of the tower that are going to hold all the tenting up around while they do the shielding. So that got put up. Both AT&amp;T and T-Mobile have moved their antennas off the tower. T-Mobile has agreed to move one of our smaller antennas out the side of the tower. But we ran into an issue. AT&amp;T wanted forty, almost forty-four thousand to move our two antennas and we kind of told them, no way. Oseo Construction, we're in negotiation with them right now just to see if we can raise those two antennas on top of the tower and have them work around them. They've done it before. Both our Inspector Badger State Inspections and our SCADA company, I make systems, agree this is probably the best for anyways for communication-wise. We drop them down any lower, we're not going to get good communication, so may end up with a problem. It doesn't sound like it could, it should be a big issue for Oseo. They're just verifying everything to make sure they're good. So, so we'll be taking care of that. One bad note we found out here now, that the North Water Treatment Plant will be shut down during this process. The reason for this is the piping in well one is not suited to allow the treatment plant to be running and also pump into our system. Both wells come into the wellhouse and one pipe goes into the water treatment plant. There's no way to get pressure into the system. So what that means is when the well, when it's running normal, it's great. But when the treatment plant filters have to go into backwash, the high-service pumps are going to shut off, which means we lose all pressure to our system on the north end, which means there'll be no water. That is a, that we cannot allow that to happen. So unfortunately, we'll be taking it offline for the duration so we can keep pressure at about sixty-five pounds. We're, we, we have some pressure-reducing valves that we are getting to put on some hydrants to make sure we don't over-pressurize the system. But unfortunately, the plant will be shut off. We will be putting notice out to people. It's just a design error that did not get looked at when the plant was built. To include another pipe, which would have been nice. So unfortunately, you know, for probably two and a half months, we will be without treated water in the north end. But we will make that definitely clear to people and make them understand that. You know, it's either that or they have no water unfortunately. So I, I think they'll understand when they hear what, what the alternative is. So I'll take any questions that you have on that.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Yeah, not good news. Have you talked with SCH about that?
We have not. At this point, there's no point, Madam Mayor. You're talking dig up the site, add more piping. There's just no way of doing it. Very disappointed in that, you know, and, you know, Mike Pollak and myself, we're not water gurus. We, you know, we never thought about it, you know, and I don't know if they even thought about it, you know, at SCH. So, it just would have been nice if, you know, somebody would have thought about it, but nobody did. So, you know, thank God it's only for, you know, a two and a half month rehab and then, you know, want to worry about it for another, you know, fifteen to twenty years and we do it again.
And so when you pump the water, I don't, we have two wells out there for pumping. I know one of them, you have to mix the water, correct?
Correct. We'll be running just pump, well, well one will be the only one running during the duration. That is the much better the water where we don't have to worry about it. That, that's been our tried and true on the north end anyways, when we hardly ever ran pump two before the treatment plant. So we'll just be running pump one. We have to do some reprogramming of our BFD. They had talked about doing a, rent, have to rent a different BFD. But we have a gentleman coming out on Thursday who thinks he can reprogram ours for a nominal fee, paying for renting one. So, we're looking, we're trying to get this stuff, you know, kind of squared away here. The Oseo is coming in here at the end of the week to get going. So, we do have about a week, week and a half before we have to shut the tower down and take care of all this. So, we do have some time for it. So it's just a matter of scrambling to get our ducts in a row so we can get going on it.
All right. All right, Council, any other questions?
This is Councilmember Maliter. Couple of questions on that particular issue. First question, are we, did someone talk to SCH to make sure this is not going to happen with the new water towers being built?
Well, the new tower towers are just directly online. It's going to be when the treatment plant would go in on that site, we would have to make sure that the piping in and out of the plant is a lot, is a lot different, yes. And, you know, we've kind of discussed that in-house with myself and Greg Johnson up there. So whoever gets it, you know, and stuff in, he kind of brought, he looked at the, he came out, looked at it and kind of looked at the piping and, you know, it's just, you know, and Greg Johnson's with WSB. You know, they're our current engineers. They're the ones doing the tower up there because he kind of came out, looked at it. I mean, so we, we, we know that when, when that, when the treatment plant goes in on, you know, on that new tower, that we'll definitely have to talk to them and make sure that piping gets squared away the right way so we don't end up with this situation.
Okay. Second question then, basically the same question, but this time for Kings Point Water Tower. Do you have that same connection with the, or same issue with the south water treatment plant there?
No, our two wells are separated. Well six is on-premise and well seven is down Kings Point aways. So that one, you know, can pump directly into the system. So, it, it comes up to you. And then we also have wells three and four on that system that help out. So we, we're, it's a, you know, a different plumbing situation there. So we, we are, we are good there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, well, one, well, one was originally redone and that's why it was set up the way it was. And that's the issue, just because of the, of the way it was piped into the building and out. So, I know we looked at it. So that's the reason.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Gary. Anybody else have questions?
This is Pam. How are you going to let residents know?
Well, to put it, we're going to put it on the web. So once we find out everything here on Thursday, what's going to happen, we'll put it, have this folks put it on the website, on Facebook. You know, probably, I mean, and may I talk to Mr. Barone too? We might even put something, I don't know, if we want to put something to Laker. But yeah, we'll try to get as much word as we can to, you know, let people know that, you know, what's going on and why.
And we can even do a direct mail if we have to to all the residents that get their water from that tower. So.
Okay, it's just, it's a long time.
It is a long time.
I mean, in the scope, you know, it is a long time, even though we know it's not going to happen for another fifteen, twenty years. Two months without treated water, that might be a little concerning to some.
Yeah, but we're stuck. Go ahead, Gary.
I was just saying, it's not, you know, it's not untreated water. I mean, it'll still have, you know, the recommended amount of fluoride, the recommended amount of chlorine. It's just not going to be going through the filter process. So, I shouldn't say that it's, it's not, it's not filtered water. It's still chemically treated and will pass all the, you know, Department of Health stuff. So, I mean, when I say that, it's just not going to go through the treatment plant.
Okay.
That's a pretty important note to let people know in communication.
Oh, yeah, that would be a good point too. Right. Just let them know it's still treated. It's just not going through the treatment plant. It's still going to have, like you said, Gary, meet, um, health department standards and, and have the fluoride and, and so on in it. So, good. All right. All right. Thank you for that update, even though it wasn't so good. So I believe that then concludes our administrative staff reports. Is that correct, Mr. Barone?
That is correct, Madam Mayor. So you move on to the council reports.
All right. So, let's see. I did attend the fire district meeting. It was held, as Mike Barone said. And we had the mayor from St. Bonnie there and we had the fire chief from St. Bonnie as well as fire chief from Mound. And we also had a representative from Shorewood and from Spring Park. And, and also the administrator for Mound was there too. So, lots of, lots of representation, a very good discussion. And we'll bring back more information in August. Then also attended the school district meeting, as Ms. Foskey had mentioned. So, with that, I'll pass it on to Ms. Mortenson. Any, any reports?
The only thing with WCC is that they wanted to let the word out that there is some new discussion via phone meeting on the redevelopment of that Mound Ray Solber property, whether it's going for local business community, you know, for the den, high density- uh, you know, for the den- the high density housing project. And, uh, you can join in onto the call if you're interested. Um, and all the information would be on the WCC, uh, website.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Maliter?
Uh, nothing to report, thank you.
All right, Ms. Bruce?
Uh, just that I'm going to be attending the Mount Fire Commission meeting on Wednesday.
Okay, Mr. Temperlin?
Uh, last Thursday, we had our July Pioneer Sierra Creek meeting. Uh, on Friday, the following day, the, um, Pioneer Sierra Creek office sent out an email to all the cities, the respective cities and, um, various government agencies as well as lake associations regarding a Zoom virtual meeting on Thursday, the thirtieth, at six o'clock. Be a public, open meeting, public can log in, um, where they can ask questions or give, uh, their thoughts on land or surface water management that if there's things that are pertinent, we can incorporate into our fourth generation plan. Um, I've asked Mr. Barone this morning if the link or that information could be put on our city webpage in case anybody that happens to be in the Pioneer Sierra Creek watershed is interested in that.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, all right, um, anything else? I don't have anything on the agenda, so, um, we are, we are, we could be adjourned, I should say, with a motion. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of it, this is Pam.
All right, Ms. Mortenson made that motion, is there a second?
A second, this is Councilmember Maliter.
All right, Mr. Maliter made that second. All those in favor signify with aye. Just say aye, aye, aye.
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 All right, okay, motion, great, thank you all. Motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you.